I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Would you please rise and join me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, Sergeant Harris is in for the chief. Chief Klinger is absent. Councilman Carnegie and Councilman Lemley are absent. Do I have a motion to excuse Councilman Carnegie and Councilman Lemley?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilman Judith Dunley and seconded by Councilman Owen to excuse the absences. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next up, we have the consent calendar, items A through E. Okay, it was motioned by Councilman Judith Dunley and seconded by Councilman Kinzer to approve consent calendar items A through E. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously.
Oh, that's a good point. I don't know.
So, I see I have missed Councilman Johnson. I do not know where she is, but we'll continue. We have more. That brings us to public comment period. So, some of you have been here before. For those of you who have not been here before, we are limited to three minutes. It's a time to comment to the council. It's not a time for argument or cross-examination. So, this evening, I think I'm going to invite our first speakers up, ladies from the Skagit County Coalition Against Trafficking. So, if you'd like to approach a podium, please say your names and addresses for the record. And thank you for coming.
I'm Carol Clayton, 586 Southwest Fairhaven Drive, Oak Harbor, Washington. Pat Paulson, 6782 Salmon Beach Road, Anacortes, Washington. And thank you for your time. We'll be very brief. We have come to give you a personal invitation for August the 23rd. Val Ritchie, he's the King County Prosecutor. He has graciously given us time to give us a blueprint for the Nordic model. We became really interested when we found out that King County passed it and that all the pimps got the message and they're bringing the children north and south on the I-5 corridor. So, I called Val and he said he would come. We need to keep in mind that, you know, you can sell a kilo of drugs one time, a 13-year-old child 20 times a day. So, this is the urgency. I come not as a moral judge here. I'm a psych nurse since 1971. I am a therapist and I specialize in adults that were molested as children. I have had to pick up the fallout. And so, there comes my passion.
I'm also a retired nurse from healthcare and I became involved in the Skagit County Coalition Against Trafficking. And I actually got trained to teach middle school children ages 11 to 14 of what to look for and to be on guard for the pimps, the groomers, the recruiters. And it is a problem in our county, each and every one of our cities in our county. And we now can go toward the buyers. This program was instituted in Sweden and it's effective. It certainly was effective in King County. And since it's going to push them our way, we need to enforce it too. So, I hope you endorse this and people show up for this.
And one last thing, we are the mayors from each of the towns we've talked to. They're all going to be there. The police, I love the police. They are so, they've embraced this and they are all going to be here. Make sure you RSVP because we are going to give you breakfast. And I hope that you come and we will come out, either one of us, anybody from our coalition, all you need to do, there's a number, call and we'll come out and meet with you anytime. We want to serve you and we need to come together as a county and not individual towns.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And is there more information for the public? Is there a way that this can be spread out? I don't see a website here or for the program in general.
I think, do you have more of these?
I have, yeah, I have more of these, but also there is, if you go to Skagit County Coalition Against Market, I mean Against Trafficking, there should be some, I think they're updating so we can have this too.
On Facebook. This has been really fast and really new, so this isn't a program that we've been prepared for and we don't want to miss this opportunity. So, it's really important for especially the officials to be involved. And you can go on the Skagit County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, there is a Facebook and see, we have meetings at our house the third Wednesday of every month. So, if there's people that want to be involved. We can also come back and give, we have a program to give to any community group or parents, that can be done, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming and for leading on this because it's an important problem that we need to get a hold of. Thanks.
We spoke about it after the convention last night, we offered, I'm not saying I'm going to try this, but it is a big issue, so thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson is home with the flu tonight.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to excuse Councilmember Johnson?
Make a motion to excuse her, yes.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Owen and seconded by Councilman Kinzer to excuse Councilman Johnson's absence due to illness. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. Anybody else for the podium tonight? Okay, at this time, the public, would you like to speak? Come on up, Mary.
Okay, I have my timer. I have timed this. It might be like seven seconds over. Good evening.
I'll give you seven seconds any day.
Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson and I've lived at 928 Beechley Road for 26 years. It has come to my attention that neither of the two roundabouts on Cook Road, the one intersecting with Ferry and Edward Merrill Streets, nor the one intersecting with Highway 20, have any sign that points to downtown Cedar Woolley. I understand that a sign would be quite exorbitantly expensive, so I would like to make a suggestion to the city council members. Could we move the current City of Cedar Woolley sign at the intersection of Ferry and Highway 20 Streets to the first roundabout? Perhaps if we played our cards right, we could persuade the Cedar Woolley Garden Club to beautify the landscape around the newly moved sign, something rock-friendly to beautify the landscape already there. Then, at the intersection Ferry and Highway 20 Streets, we could put in a smaller sign that might not cost so much. Is this something the council would consider? It seems a shame that historic downtown Cedar Woolley is completely bypassed by travelers on the Highway 20 Corridor vehicle road, who may be unaware that Ferry Street actually leads into our charming downtown. Ha, and you thought I only ever spoke about the library. I would also like to thank the city council members for attending that grueling nearly four-hour meeting Monday night about the fate of our library. Their dedication is much appreciated. I would especially like to commend Julia Johnson for her remarks supporting Cedar Woolley City Library in the event the proposal doesn't happen. As Mr. Berg concurred, that is indeed a city council decision and one which would indicate to the world whether Cedar Woolley values its historic library or not. I would like to reiterate to those on the negotiating team that the revised code of Washington provides for three years to establish a library before a rescinding vote may occur. People have suspicion that the Central Skagit Library is finally coming to the table, partly because they're concerned there might be a push to recall that Cedar, Central Skagit Library District. But doesn't RCW 2712320 indicate that the state of Washington believes that a group of dedicated, educated, and motivated people are capable of forming a fully functioning, successfully operating library in that timeframe? It isn't five years, or 10 years, or whenever. The term is specifically three years. If the Central Skagit Library were a fully functioning, successfully operating library, would there even be any question of a recall vote? Yet, the Central Skagit Library District has had its three years and the county people are now gunning for our library. It would seem that in proceeding toward handing over the running of our library to such an unproven entity, it would be wise, even prudent, to use extreme caution. If the Central Skagit Library Board hasn't been able to provide satisfactory services to most of its current constituents, why on earth would we be willing to trust our 100-plus year old library to them? How could that possibly benefit the citizens of Cedar Woolley? Please consider these important questions when proceeding with negotiations. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Pretty spot on on the time. Thanks, Mary. Anybody else for public comment period? Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Tomasino. I live at 704 Sauk Mountain Drive and I am here to talk about the meeting that took place Monday night. The First Amendment of the Constitution says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment, a religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for regressive grievances." I need to let the city council know that I was very upset Monday evening, the way the mic was taken out of the hands of Jim Johnson, a person who served this city for years, not only in the City Planning Commission, but also the Skagit Fish Enhancement Group who served together. And I was, I was not very happy with the way that the mic was taken out of his hand by the moderator. I did think that Mayor Reigner had a good point not to annex as opposing to contracting. However, I think that the district ought to contract to Cedar Woolley as opposed to the other way around. And if that's a deal killer, so be it. After all, it was mentioned by one of the folks from the district that our library is inadequate to serve their needs. And if so, if they're so disinterested, then let the deal not go through, then we'll just have to sit down with city council members and citizens and figure something out to keep our library, won't we? Now, I've also thought about something else. Why not, you know, if this deal goes through, why not a regional sales tax as opposed to a property tax increase? Now, I'm just spitballing here, folks. I'm just throwing out food for thought. And when we define the term "community," I believe it easily remembered that it was the Cedar Woolley community that elected this city council. And while some here may be globalists, others may not be, and that needs to be respected. There's also something that, when each and every one of you were sworn into office, you established what's called a fiduciary trust. Now, I've been over this before and I'm going to go over it again. A fiduciary is someone who asks for another. And that trust is established. Now, there's been some things that go on, that have gone on, since all these negotiations and non-negotiations that have been going on, that have served to break down that trust. And I believe that it can be, I can be, I believe it can be healed and it can be taken care of, but the people of Cedar Woolley and the city council need to work together. And so, that's all I need, have to say. Other than that, anybody who needs a copy of the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, I brought a few extras with me.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa McComber and I live at 417 Spring Lane here in Cedar Woolley. And I just want to thank you guys for the meeting on Monday and I was very excited about the conversation we had and the opportunity to answer questions and to get a lot of facts put out there that people need to hear. And I just want to reiterate that as a citizen, I hope you represent me and you fight to expand our library and give us more resources by working on this collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public comment period? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. Cookson Beecher, 9684 Simpson Road. And I'm here not for this, but to make a comment about making sure the roundabouts don't shuttle people right out of town. And a while, years ago, we had a meeting that packed, the whole community center was really contentious. And all these people showed up and they lived like at Brickyard Creek and everything. And a lot of them said, even though their address is Cedar Woolley, they have never been to Cedar Woolley. And then, a lady that worked at our newspaper said she used, she lived at Clear Lake, she used to think Cedar Woolley was like the crossroads of nine and 20. And so, I think it is important because our revenue, we want revenue for the city, so we want people coming to town. We don't want them just shooting past. So, that's my comment about that. Thanks for listening to it.
Thank you, Cookson. Anybody else? Going once? Okay, we'll close the public comment period and move on with the agenda. Under new business, here's something I'm looking forward to. Item number five, which is pages 39 through 55 for the council, presentation for the Helping Hands Food Bank and the Woolley Food Forest Association. Over and back. Laser pointer if you need it. And pointed at the, over here.
I'm Rebecca Schlott and I'm representing Helping Hands Food Bank as the board of directors and the volunteers that are here tonight.
I'm Quentin Sutter with Carlotti Architects and representing, helping design and build these projects.
So, Helping Hands Food Bank is your Skagit County's largest food bank and we're lucky enough to be here in Cedar Woolley. We nourish our community, we respect kindness, absolutely without judgment. Our impact here is in 2015, nearly $2.9 million worth of food and resources were returned back into the local economy. That includes all the volunteer hours and all the food that we rescue and give back out to our community. Over 14,000 unduplicated individuals were served. If we count how, if someone came in 52 times, because they can come in once a week, we actually saw 127,000 individuals last year. Some of the things that we're doing is our distribution. We have four programs that we do at Helping Hands. Your community helped distribute over 1.4 million pounds of food in 2015. And currently, in 2016, our average families per week is up to 711 families that we're seeing every week. And right now, we're currently seeing them on Wednesday, which was today, for five hours. And that's something that we need to fix, hopefully at our new facility. We do a backpack program that we started this year in 2015. We delivered 2,081 backpacks to the children here in Cedar Woolley to six different schools. The counselors are seeing that children are not eating over the weekend, so we're trying to fill that gap from school lunch on Friday till breakfast on Monday. So, we added an extra 8,600 meals back into our community through that program. And currently, in Skagit County, one in four children do not have enough access to food. We also do a mobile food program. We have 110 clients that are currently enrolled in Mount Vernon and in Cedar Woolley. Mount Vernon, we had to take on that program because the, Mount Vernon Food Bank could not, so we're, and then we're going to transition, get that back to them in 2017 and hopefully move more upriver, because that's where we feel like their need is more in Cedar Woolley and upriver as well. We also do a grocery rescue program. We rescued almost a million pounds of food from the landfill last year. And that's all on volunteer work. That's 66% of our food is where that comes from. So, the reason why that pie graph is so important, only 10% of our food comes from the government. So, where it comes from is grocery rescue from here, Food Lifeline and Northwest Harvest are statewide grocery rescue programs, and then donations, 5% is donated from our community. So, we're not a government-run program. We're definitely a nonprofit. Volunteer is my favorite part. Your community logged over 20,000 volunteer hours in 2015 and some of them are here today, even though they worked very hard today. Who uses the food bank? Everyone and anyone. From a grandfather who's taking care of his grandchildren, from a hard-working family, lots of children, and just regular good families. Our age demographic, we take care of, 45% of our clients are children. It says on that one, 12% are seniors, but what we're seeing is an increase in 2016, we're actually up to 70% are seniors and the rest are adults. Clients come from all over the county. One of our no judgments is, I don't care where you come from. We've actually been seeing an upcrease in Waltham County coming down and we will serve anybody who walks through that door. So, our forever home. And why is it important for us to build this project? And this is a beautiful project. It's on the corner of Fruitdale and Wicker. And this is if you're coming south on Fruitdale. And the goal with the architect, which you can maybe talk a little bit about that, was to fit into what Cedar Woolley is. We felt like that barn was just a really great look for the community. So, you can see, oh, laser pointer. So, this is Wicker, Fruitdale, and there's currently a home there. And then, the building will sit right here. And then, the food forest will sit right here. So, you can get kind of an idea of where it's going to stay at. And then, that's kind of the overall, and you're near sight what it's going to look So, I know the biggest concerns that I've heard is why this particular spot? So, four years ago, I want to say, when we moved into our current location, that current location was always meant to be temporary. The tribe, Upper Skagit Tribe, which we thank very much for putting their needs aside and they allowed us to move in there. So, we moved in there with knowing that we needed to leave. So, our board of directors has been looking for three or four years with the help of the city, trying to find a perfect location for us. And I narrowed it down to eight reasons. And I know there's a million more. So, we need a place that we can be there forever and ever. So, with this property, we will own it free and clear. We'll own the land, we'll own the house, we'll own the building and the food forest when you guys are done. And that will sustain us forever. We'll be able to, we won't have a mortgage on the place, we'll be able to sustainably be in there forever. The cost, that's a huge one. Everybody wonders, oh, how are we going to fund this project? A lot of the buildings around here that were empty are a million dollars to start with, and then it takes a million dollars to upgrade them to where we need to be. Our goal, when we sat down with our sponsors and our friends and our donors and said, this is what we want to do, they really pushed us and encouraged us not to just think about a food bank in the bottom of a church, but really extend ourselves and make something that's really beautiful for the community. So, we looked at cost. The cost of this property is about half this price is going to any of the buildings that are currently available here in Skagit County. We also, one of the things that Cedar Woolley really wants to do is fill those up with businesses. We're considered a social service, not a business, because we don't make any revenue. So, that's one of the reasons why that location is great for us. Cedar Woolley, there was a lot of talks with the board of directors as we got limited down to two spots, that those were the only two places that were big enough for us, should we go to Burlington. And that was something that the board of directors was very much against, moving out, because we've always been here for 37 years. So, really staying in Cedar Woolley was a very important piece for us. Obviously, we need to be large enough. We're currently in a 10,000 square foot building. We need to be in that at least. We need to have enough room for a semi-truck to turn around and we need enough room for our community gardens and now the food forest. Obviously, semi-truck traffic coming up Highway 20, straight on Fruitdale, they're there. They're not driving in Cedar Woolley in the downtown trying to get in there. Room to grow. I, the board envisioned someday even bigger, being bigger. And there's plans in the works to even be bigger. So, we need that room to grow. And then, a bus stop. We're in the works talking with Skagit Transit about making a bus stop right there currently. We don't have a bus stop at the food bank. People have to get dropped off by Walgreens or WALK and that's really difficult for those who are disabled. Some of the projects that we're really excited about, new programs that we're going to be able to do in there, is we're going to have a grocery store model, so it'll be open 25 hours a week instead of five hours a week. And people will be able to come and go as they need to and go grocery shopping. It'll feel just like a grocery store. It will give us more time for us to communicate with them and see if there's any other needs that they need. Right now, we're pushing them through as fast and hard as we possibly can, just to get them through. And we don't have that individual time that we can sit and talk with them and, you know, ask them, what else do you need? What else can we do for you? We'll be having offices and conference rooms. We're in the talks with Skagit Valley Pollards with having night classes, United Way, Community Action, WIC. Everybody wants to come into that facility because we have the clients that need those services. So, all these will be places, right now in Cedar Woolley, we don't really have that. We don't have a facility for services. Our clients, they choose to go to the food bank or Community Action. They have enough fuel to go to one or the other, they're going to come out to the food bank. So, now, they can come and do all of it at once. Health and wellness, that's one of the things that's part of poverty is like what we want to do is help feed them great food, especially with the locally grown food, and have nutrition classes and cooking classes and that kind of stuff to help them, again, move out of poverty and be healthier. A work-study program, we want to work like what Goodwill does in Mount Vernon. They teach people work-study programs. But what I, what we want to do is more on a warehouse level with the forklift training, stocking and that kind of stuff, working with the Department of Labor. And then, obviously, the fun part is being able to have enough land to have a community garden and a food forest. So, I want to thank the Helping Hands Board of Directors for having this vision. Nobody actually came to us and said, what do you guys want to do? We need to do this. It was a great group of seven board members that decided that this is what Cedar Woolley needs. They need more services, they need more things to help people, you know, thrive and get better. And so, they really helped us. And thank you for, Genneke Industries for their support. Peter Carlotti Architects, Pat Severnstone developed the group. The City of Cedar Woolley, of course, and they're in all of your hard work, Skagit County, the Woolly Sea Forest, Woolhoney, and then the many more people that are working on this project. It's kind of endless amount of people. And then, something that we really, really believe is how a community takes care of those in need really reflects on the strength and potential it has. So, our community will only be stronger because we're stronger.
So, I don't know how mu, I don't know how much time I have left.
All you want.
Well, so, as, as the architects in charge in the design, and they came to us, it was pretty obvious they have a function of what they need to serve the community, what they need for spaces, obviously, that she went over offices for Obviously, that she went over offices for community support. There's a warehouse, there's a retail. That stuff is pretty obvious. But we need to kind of take that function, put it in a building that is both economical to build, because we're talking about dollars and cents, right? And then also something that blends in to the area that we're in. Obviously, you saw the site plan and where we're at. We're kind of in a more rural part of the town. So, the main concept here, you can leave that, that is fine, is we wanted to kind of do kind of a barn design to it, because there's a few barns down here, and I believe this one was a barn too. So, it made sense to kind of go with a barn aspect for the design. Part of the cost savings on it is doing a simple truss wood-framed walls with a truss system over the top. We're not going to break the budget with some, you know, big steel structure or big, you know, overhangs with a big canopy and all this fancy stuff. We figured a simple barn would be very cost-effective, and it'll fit into the community that it sits in. So, this main face will face Fruitdale Road, you know, barn, so we'll do simple wood siding, probably more hardy siding, just because of the maintenance side of things. We can paint it and kind of leave it simple like that. Probably vinyl windows, again, cost-effective, energy-efficient. And main entrance will be somewhat hidden from Fruitdale Road. The rendering landscaping is just part of the rendering. We'll probably do a little bit heavier shrubbery along Fruitdale Road, just to kind of help shield and reduce the look of the asphalt parking lot. Obviously, we don't want a sea of asphalt, and so we're going to try to reduce that. The loading docks and for all the trucks are actually on the backside of the building, so that way when trucks come in, they pull in, they're more on the backside again, so we don't have big industrial trucks that are on Fruitdale to kind of take away from that barn feel. We didn't have it in the slide presentation, but I do have some floor plans and some extra plans over here and site plans that I'll leave here. That way, if anyone wants to take them, they can. But that was, the bulk of the design was to keep it very cost-effective by doing a simple A-frame structure with wood trusses, wood siding, vinyl windows, open floor plan to kind of, not going to do a bunch of walls on the inside, and then heavily landscaped, putting industrial services on the backside to guard it from Fruitdale Road. And then the food forest will be shielding the north side of the building from the residents on the north side. And then you have the existing buildings on the south side of the site that kind of shields the south side of the site. So, it really keeps it kind of a really secluded building. At the end of the day, it just kind of has that face on Fruitdale. That's where we're going to spend a little bit of money to kind of make it feel nicer along Fruitdale, and then everything else, just keep it real simple. What's that? Okay. Thank you. Don't run off. Hey, Will, before you start, does council have any questions or comments with respect to that presentation?
No.
Okay. You're up, Will.
Okay. By the way. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Will Hone. So, I'm kind of an accidental tourist into this food bank project. I work for the county and the prosecutor's office, and the prosecutor, Rich Wyrick, asked me to take an interest in the food bank and help them with their permit and with their land and so forth. And I think that's why Rebecca's thanking me. And so, I got to work with Rick Judd and some of the other great people, and it's just been a really fun project to get involved in. I end up working on a lot of contentious things, and this is just an all-around positive deal. There's nothing bad to say about this, I don't think. So, another, kind of a convergence happened here, because I have a real interest in something called permaculture, which I'll explain what that means. It basically means, how do you grow food if you, how many of you grow food? How many of you have gardens and so forth? And you probably noticed that you're going to the country store, you're getting fertilizer, you're getting stuff to lay down, you're getting seeds. You're hauling a lot of stuff in, in the back of a truck to grow your food, probably. And that's how most food is grown commercially, industrially. How would you do that if you couldn't go to the country store? How would you do that if you couldn't go down to North Hill and get a whole bunch of compost and bring in all those things that make stuff grow? That's kind of what it's about. So, a group of us with an interest in this, we're looking at doing a project up in Northern State, some of the old overgrown farm fields up there that are covered with blackberries. And as I was working with Rebecca on the food bank, she said, "You know, we'd really like to do kind of an orchard garden thing on this land to the north of the food bank." And I said, "Well, do I have a plan for you?" So, that's how this came together. I wanted to introduce some of the folks that are involved in this Woolley Food Forest Association. First of all, Sorai Stevens, who's sitting here in the front in the white. She's from the Algeria area, has been working on this kind of stuff for years on her own place and in Thailand. And she prepared the design that I'll be talking about here in a few minutes. Michael McComber is part of our group. Mark Benson, he's a retired IBM project manager, lives up on Bacchus Hill, has been doing some cool stuff. Tony Wright, he's a Boeing engineer, lives on Ferry Street next to me. Another guy that's not here, Matt Van Bovin, he has something called Feral Farm up in Rockport. For the last 20 years, he's been working on stuff like this. He's an interesting guy. He would rather be with trees than come to meetings, so he opted not to come tonight. But he's really knowledgeable and been a real good source of information for us. So, what are we doing? Bottom line, we're building this community orchard garden in partnership with the Helping Hands Food Bank. And we're going to take care of the execution of it, rounding up all the plants, the design, and putting it in place. And then it's going to be maintained by us in partnership with the Helping Hand Food Banks, volunteers, and customers. And so, we're going to be teaching folks how to interface with this, how we're doing this. You know, I think there's the saying that you're all probably familiar with, "If you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. If you teach him to fish, you feed him for a lifetime." So, that's the idea. So, the food this produces, it'll come on over a period of years. We're using principally perennials, things that, you know, it's not annual crops. For example, nut trees, they're not producing heavily until year seven, year eight, year 10, that sort of thing. But as it produces food, it'll principally go to the customers of the food bank. So, it's also a demonstration and education facility, so we're, you know, going to be teaching, as I was talking about. So, I just wanted to give you kind of a crash course in what permaculture is and food forest, and how it differs from just planting annual plants or planting an orchard in certain ways. Oh, one other thing I wanted, well, I'll get into this here. So, kind of at a big-picture level, if you consider, global population's gone from a billion to 7 billion in just under 200 years. That's thanks to our modern food system and agriculture. It's done a good job of feeding people. And by the way, this is from a really crunchy hippie website called Monsanto, if any of you've heard that. So, and this is how it's done. It's done with annual crops principally. It involves the use of a lot of fossil fuels and other finite inputs. And you can see that just by looking at some basic numbers. Here's world oil production and world population. They track each other. This is world rock phosphate production versus world population. Everybody knows the basic nutrients that go into plants, nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium. Most of the phosphorus comes from a mining-type activity, phosphate production. So, you know, these are finite things. They're going to go away someday, so what do we do? And how do we change that paradigm? So, that's really what this is about. It's also, when you are growing annual crops, you have to fight things back every year that want to compete with your plants, and you have to spray them with stuff. Because you have one kind of plant, if something comes in and takes over that and attacks that one kind of plant, you're in trouble. You don't have 200 different kinds of plants, and if you lose one, it's not such a big deal. It also has to do with an issue that I'm pretty familiar with here in the valley, water. When you have essentially bare dirt, and you're trying to get something to grow out of it every single year, you need a lot of water. If you have something that looks a lot more like a forest, you don't need nearly as much. Well, you really only need water when you start it. So, Sisyphian Task, by the way, Sisyphus was the, it's a Greek myth, the guy was condemned to roll a rock up the hill, and as soon as he got to the top, it rolled back down, and he had to do it over and over in eternity. So, kind of the idea behind that. So, this is just kind of a visual idea of the difference of what we're talking about. The idea of a monoculture is on the right-hand side. It's how most food is grown, and it's super effective. We have an amazing food system, but it has these weaknesses. The left-hand side's more what we're talking about here. It looks like early successional forest, essentially. The idea that you end up with a lot of biodiversity, lots of things live in this, live in this. It looks a lot like habitat. It meets not only human needs, but ecosystem needs. So, the idea here is, what we're trying to experiment with, it's not intended to replace commercial agriculture. That's a business model. It's more like, think of it more like a victory garden, only you're using a lot of perennials, you know, victory gardens from World War II. This is a small, you know, community-level type thing. So, what is permaculture? David Suzuki, you all remember The Nature of Things, that show, he was the guy that was the producer of that. Here's what he has to say. What permaculturists are doing is the most important activity that any group is doing on the planet. I guess that's a little self-congratulatory for me to put that on the slide. Anyway, that's what he says. So, the idea is you just observe and mimic natural systems. You try to replicate what nature does and how you grow food, instead of trying to beat it. And the idea is you reduce the inputs and the labor steadily with the goal of no outside inputs by using perennials or planting once, and the idea is you harvest for a lifetime, instead of doing this over and over every single year. You focus on essentially what wants to grow here. Just sit back and think about what wants to grow around here, and try to imitate that with plants that grow food. So, what does want to grow here? What was here? Forests, right? And you cut one down. Well, what happens in most contexts is Doug firs get planted on a spacing and try to beat back the other stuff and get more Doug firs. This is commercial industrial forestry. But if you just cut down a stand of timber and let it go, what happens? Now, nobody's coming in there and planting anything, and nature just takes over. There's this idea that we've been taught that nature is this very fragile thing. No, it's not. It's very resilient. You cut down a forest, it'll take right over in a relatively few years. Ground cover comes in, ground blackberries, butterfly bushes, they're all fixing nitrogen. Alders start up, they're starting to build the soil. And then you have this successional forest thing that happens, until eventually you end up with an apex forest. Look how productive that is. And nobody's doing anything. That's growing all by its lonesome right there. So, that's the model. That's what you're trying, that's what you're, instead of, I think Sorai had this good expression, "Instead of trying to swim upstream like a salmon, ride the wave like a surfer." So, use what the nature wants to do. The idea is, you know, this is where most food is grown, but this is way more productive. It's called analog forestry, essentially. You end up with planting a forest, essentially. It's an intentionally designed forest, the things that all lock together and support each other and produce food. You have all these different, essentially, layers going on. There's a kind of a more basic design. So, you've got, you know, you've got things going on down here underground, you've got, on the surface, you've got things that fix nitrogen like comfrey, you've got strawberries as ground cover, currants and berries, vines that climb up, you know, lower trees, might be fruit trees. And I'll get into our specific design, and then your kind of apex trees are nut trees. They get big. And you design this thing so that it kind of slopes towards the south. This is usually where the sun's coming from in the northern hemisphere. This is kind of what it looks like. To the eye used to looking at nice straight rows of little tops of carrots coming out, this looks like a mess, but it really is incredibly productive. What's happening is you are not trying to beat weeds, you're shading them out with things that you want. So, here's another example. You can see here, this, again, this looks like a mess, but here's a path through here, and this is all productive stuff going on in here. The idea is you're giving it, you just, when you plant it, you give a head start to the things you want to happen, so they can beat out the things that you don't. And what you're doing is you're creating living soil, instead of soil that is growing things by putting things into the soil, like fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides. You are using these natural processes to create living soil, just like is in a forest. Yep.
Is there a plan for this project?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's out on the Fruitdale and Wicker. It's a hayfield right now. The idea of it is, you can see, here's kind of a labor schedule from a similar thing in Australia. So, we have here, and this is, you know, things are in meters and hectares, so that's why it's not particularly easy to contemplate. You can get the basic idea. There's a whole lot of work and effort in the front end of it, and that curve falls off when you get towards the end of it. That's the basic idea. There's a lot of work up front, and there's less and less work as you go. So, here's, there's a number of folks that have done this around here, and there's some really good longstanding, multi-decadal examples. Bullock Brothers, Homestead out on Orcas Island, Matt's place up in Rockport, Sorai's place is a good example. This is Talia and my place out off Home Road, that we just sold so we could move into the great county of Cedar Woolley. And what you can see here, again, is it looks kind of messy, but if you start drilling into it, strawberries, chestnut tree, autumn olive, which is a nitrogen fixer that produces a real high antioxidant berry. This is a Japanese heart nut, which produces a nut when it's mature that tastes a lot like a cashew. This is comfrey, which is fixing all these nutrients and shading out things, weeds that you don't want, cherry trees, all sorts of different trees in through here. You plant it fairly densely, and then you start, you keep cutting it back to keep it in a kind of mid-successional forest state. You know, so here's pears, comfrey, bees everywhere. You have things that are pollinating all over the place. My biggest problem with this thing was branches breaking from too much fruit, because every single flower is getting pollinated. So, you want to have a problem, that's a good one to have. Here's another shot. Figs, they grow around here quite well, need good sun, but black currants, just, it could go on. So, this is an example of a food forest design that's being implemented down in Seattle at Beacon Hill Park, on Beacon Hill, Beacon Food Forest. It's a little more highly intensely designed and built out. There's a lot more people, they're putting a lot more resources into it as a result. But, so, here is, oh, I guess, later, I was going to show you our design, it was coming along. So, what the idea is, is that our group, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we've entered an agreement with the food bank for the installation of a food forest along these lines on the northernmost two acres of that food bank site. So, we're responsible for the design, the execution, funding, and then there'll be essentially a turnover once this is completed. The idea is we start planting in January, it's when you want to plant trees, is in the winter. And then we will tie in to the food bank. We're anticipating that Sorai's going to stay on with this effort, all of us will, but Sorai in a more focused way, and coordinate the volunteers, coordinate the customers of the food bank to learn about how to do this and participate in it. You know, it's not, you do need to know what you're doing a little bit. You don't want people just walking around with a machete and a bucket in there. So, oh, here's our design. And Sorai did this. It's really fantastic. And I might have to let her answer some questions, but, you know, you can see here. So, here's the existing subdivision up here. These folks are going to be looking at, to the south, is this wonderful orchard community garden. They're not going to be looking, even looking at a building or asphalt. They're going to be looking at something really nice. But the idea here is to have a mow strip around the exterior, to kind of keep things controlled, a hedge row that'll be consisting of a bunch of different productive things. You know, we've got flowering quince and roses down here. The front side of it is going to be focused on kind of beauty and aesthetics a little bit. And as we come up here into the north, like I said, this hedge row will be things like Siberian pea shrub, which is a nitrogen fixer, autumn olive. There's actually an entire five-page-long written narrative around what all is going where. So, this is kind of to give you a big-picture idea. So this is kind of to give you a big picture idea. But up here, like I was saying, you know, the sun's down here, so you want your bigger trees that are ultimately going to get big up in this area. So walnuts, chestnuts going on in here, but you're planting all these other things. And you kind of got to think of it like a multi-phase project because when you plant a nut tree at first, it's this big, but it's going to get really big in 20 years. So, you know, for example, you got, you got plants for black currants in here, these red circles are nitrogen fixers, so things like autumn olive, gummi, other things that are productive, but also pull atmospheric nitrogen from the air and fix them in the soil and build the soil. You probably are familiar with how like peas, legumes build soil and add nitrogen to the soil. There are perennials that do that. Now, they're not really native, but they're, actually, these ones are from Siberia that we're talking about. But by the way, they're well-established in this ecosystem. These are not things that are going to get out of control and go crazy like blackberries. They've been around for a long time. We're getting it all from nurseries in the state of Washington, they've been on people's property. So want to calm everybody's fears about that. There's not going to be any weird stuff happening here. Fruit trees happening in here, you know, a lot of fruit trees, their life is only, you know, 20, 30, 40 years sometimes. Nut trees, they have 150-year life. So you think about this in multiple stages and phases as you plan it. So the idea is have walkways coming through here. One of the things that we all learned from our, you know, collective experience is to not try to put too many groovy hippie curves into stuff, you know? Things, if you plant it nice and straight, chaos will develop all on its own. And it's nice to know where you stuck stuff. But it's nice to also have some nice walking paths to give some, you know, to give some aesthetic design to it. Up here a labyrinth, so a, you know, a structure with vines growing up around it. A learning space here, different things going on here. Let's see, start with seven, it's kind of a witch hazel planting. Carolina snowbell is what she has listed here, Japanese snowbell. I guess I won't go through every aspect of the design, but just the basic flow of it.
Because, because it's a public space, I made a design that I thought was, you know, there was chaos in those pictures, so I tried to bring it a little bit in order and be, so the general public could understand what they were seeing with the demonstration there.
Do you want to, do you want to come talk about this for a couple minutes?
Okay.
So, here's the middle of this.
All right. Well, we have two entrances, one here, one there. Those are grape arbors, and I'm immediately, all right. Those are both grape arbors. This path goes up to a labyrinth. It's not, it's going to be defined by mounds and flowers. My friend made one that has pavers up in Fairhaven Park and he's agreed to do one. This is going to be Cedar Woolley style, so. Pretty simple. Along the paths are more flowers and more intensive plantings, and on the edges, a little more wild. These are guilds. And one concept in permaculture is you create plant relationships like a community. So each plant serves a purpose. So you have your pollinators, your nitrogen fixers, your plants that accumulate other things like potassium, phosphorus. And so each of these guilds, I've taken into consideration along here, they're a little bit more particular. So I've taken into consideration what plant I'm focusing on and then I've created relationships around it to support that particular thing. Like one of them is a Japanese pepper tree. And then the plants around it are related to spices. There's a tea, tea guild. That's about it. I mean, then we have the two sheds, lots of maintenance, compost, the regular kind of thing. Oh, and then these are the annual beds that Finney Farm have started at the Food Bank. And so we plan on moving them here and we'll kind of help maintain that relationship with Finney Farm, the annual beds and the volunteers. And that's about, you guys have any questions?
Humans are not going to be one of those interested in this.
No.
Or some kind of facility or some kind of idea for it. It's like some plants, animals don't lie in this deal, they can't do anything. Worried about that or are you just like, let's feed them?
Well, dear, the hedge rows are going to be fairly pokey, so, and dense. So deer will try to deter that way and then we'll have little fences around trees on need to protect them as they get big. Then the hazelnuts, they're in a row because those are typically predators go after them like jays. And so, if necessary, we can easily hoop them and net them. Same goes for the blueberries, that's why I've put the different berries in the lines here. We're not totally wild. And so as, as the need arises, as predators find us, we'll, we'll net them.
Well, you know, in permaculture, one of the things you like to think of is you never have a problem, you have a resource opportunity. So this is not a deer problem, this is a benefit.
Yes. We'll have some lions up here in the corner next to the benches.
Yeah. Excellent.
Any other questions?
Do we have any questions from council? Or comments?
Yeah, maybe to either of you, I guess. Beacon Hill's been at it for a few years and they've only developed a small fraction of that land in that park. What's the timeframe for this build-out?
Immediately.
Okay. So we're not going to do it little bits at a time like they're doing, I'm not sure?
We've got a lot of time in Seattle to talk.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, frankly, I mean, first of all, the first thing you want to do is get the trees in the ground. Wow, yeah. So here's, here's the execution thing, Sarai. Here's the execution plan. Your big challenge is grass, getting rid of grass. You can, how do you do that without, you know, nuking it with herbicides over and over? Trying to get away from that. And so what folks that have done this and developed is a really good way to deal with this is pondling. So, you know, you have these, a big rubber sheet essentially that folks use to line the bottom of the pond so all the water doesn't run out. It's also a really fantastic way to just mulch grass very quickly. So, I started looking around and trying to find, you know, some used pond liner. A 20 by 20 sheet of this stuff is about $400. That's not going to work for two acres. But I did find a place in Colorado that recycles these things. They have a mismanufactured one and they're going to give it to us, 90,000 square feet of it, for, which is two acres, for the cost of the transportation. So that's a good start for us. So what we'll be able to do is have that delivered, cut it into pieces. What you do is you cut the grass tight, you spray it with manure, and that makes everything want to grow. And then you lay down this pond liner and it just kind of mulches the grass, gets it real hot. And then you can just peel it back as you plant. So, and then the, but the first thing you do is get the trees in the ground. So it's not necessary that we're going to execute all of the components of this. I think the phase one is plant the trees. We have the trees lined up. Matt's going to, Matt Van Bow in Farrell Farms providing Japanese heart nuts. The chestnut trees, we've got a commitment for 40 of them from a Nutiva-funded grant program that's proliferating chestnuts out on Orcas Island. There's several folks in the local area that have committed fruit trees. We've got a plan for several hundred black currants and blueberries from somebody that's got some three-year-old plants that they need to move. So we've got the plant material lined up. So it's really just a matter of getting the site prepped with this pond liner and then getting out there and doing it. I'll get through this, the rest of this real quick. It might answer some questions and we'll take any more questions if you have. So the, you know, what's going to be in there? There'd be a lot of familiar things, pears, peaches, blueberries, figs, and then some other horizon expanders, things like gummi. It's just one of this highest lycopene antioxidant berries there is out there. It's also a nitrogen fixer, it's a Siberian plant. You know, there'd be a bunch of other things you've never heard of that are pretty cool. One of the things that we really want to focus on is cost and efficiency in the installation. You know, a lot of these kind of things have been done over 20 years by folks that have, you know, woofers, they're called woofers on their place, people working for free essentially. And, you know, how do we demonstrate how anybody can do this on a cost-effective basis? Instead of putting in a bunch of things in your yard that don't produce anything and you have to spray with stuff, why not do this? It makes, makes a community a lot more resilient if there's, if every homestead has some of its own food. So that's kind of the basic schedule. You know, we've pretty much got the design. The design will need to be approved ultimately by the Food Bank Board. We'll order our plant material in the fall. One of the things we're doing, I also wanted to introduce my niece, Iliana Hone, she's a, here in the front. Ignoring the sign not to wear a hat.
That's only for court.
That's only for court, okay, you're off the hook. She is a junior at Cedar Woolley High School, has been in Wayne Ramsay's program, and we're going to be teaching a class a week on, Mark Benson is a, has an education degree, he's going to be leading that effort on permaculture in the fall. And then the high school class is going to help us plant this stuff. So they're going to learn some theory, then they're going to learn some execution. So I guess, yeah, I talked about that a little early. So we're going to budget for, in our plan, for a part-time manager of our association to coordinate the education, ongoing planning, volunteers. The idea here is it's going to be linked really closely with the Food Bank. They're great at finding grants and appropriate funding for that kind of thing, so that'll be helpful. We're going to help the clients learn about how to do this and harvest really healthy, sustainably grown food. The kind of stuff that's going to come out of this, not in year one or two, but eventually, is the kind of stuff that's not cheap. When you go to a store that sells organic food, it's, it's good stuff. And I think there's, the idea of participate, participation in your own food is really empowering for people. And I already, I guess, talked about that before. So, do you have any questions?
So, thank you for that. I think they all deserve a round of applause, especially the board. Before we move on to the next item, I think it would be beneficial to talk a little bit about how we got here in terms of the place to do it. And, you know, I wouldn't be a politician if I didn't try and pitch my council. They did a good job, they were looking forward and they, and they showed a little faith when we initially purchased this property. And Aaron, if you could just go over the win-win-win that we got out of this and, and how great it was to work with this board to get to this vision, it's really important.
Sure. Yeah, well, the city actually, of course, owns the property to the west of this location, that is the Cedar Woolley Union Cemetery, and has for at least the decade that I've been here, been interested in purchasing Mr. and Mrs. Riggles' property for cemetery expansion. So, I know I first met Mr. Riggles in probably 2007, and Mr. Hayden worked on this project before my time here. The Riggleses have gotten quite a bit older, they're both 93, and started talking to them again, I guess about last fall, about their future plans for this site. And at the same time, we understood the Food Bank was once again looking to move and were very interested in finding a permanent home for the Food Bank in the Cedar Woolley area. So, we worked with the Riggles family to acquire this 10-acre parcel subject to a life estate on the home and the garage, allowing Mr. and Mrs. Riggles to live in their home for as long as they desire. And then started working with Rick Judd on locations. And he and I have looked at, I don't know how many locations, hopped in a little city car and zipped around town and driven off in the brambles here and there. We've looked at zoning, you know, there are a lot of challenges with the Food Bank in terms of different zones. And this one really seemed to be a good match in that the city ultimately would be acquiring the land, the city would be the biggest neighbor, the bus line is right there, it's got the good access for public utilities and it had room to grow. So, other sites the Food Bank looked at, you know, even on day one after a post-buildout, they're hemmed in, so no real opportunity for any ag activity or anything like that. So, the win is the city purchased this property for $400,000. At the time of purchase, we, we had appraisals done of a five acres vacant and five acres with the home. We've been communicating with the Food Bank from the very beginning, process-wise, so we've established a price point for the Food Bank of $300,000 for the five acres with the buildings, which is consistent with the appraisal from last fall. And the city, in fact, you're, kind of moving into the next agenda item, if that's all right. Agenda item 6I is a proposed lease agreement with Helping Hands Food Bank. On your council table tonight is a revised version that includes a purchase option. And you can see the highlighted areas are the only changes. So, the basic structure of this lease agreement is a 15-year term and that's timed for the benefit of the Food Bank and applying for a grant from the Department of Commerce. That grant application's due Friday. And the minimum requirement is a 15-year lease on the land. However, Rick and I had talked from the outset and of course, city council's been well aware that our intention was to see the land transferred to the Food Bank as their own land so they wouldn't be shuffled out of Bingham Park over to, you know, behind the new roundabout over to behind the old Forest Service building to wherever may be next. So, what we've done is, in an effort to assist the Food Bank in terms of transitional costs, is the lease agreement charges the Food Bank rent and the cost, and the amount of the city's internal holding costs for the funds. So, as you all know, audience would have no reason to know this, but, you know, we purchased this property in part with cemetery endowment funds, about $100,000, a little less than that. But cemetery fund bought its piece. And the other piece, we borrowed from our sewer reserve fund and we pay ourselves, the city pays itself, the local government investment pool rate of return, which is not great. So, under the lease, we look at a, essentially a prior 12-month LGIP rate of return applied to the next 12 months, that's the annual rent for the Food Bank. Their 2016 rent for August 1 through July of 2017 is, I think, $930. So, you know, our objective was to extend our own internal valuation to the Food Bank so they didn't have to go out to a commercial bank and pay 4% or, I don't know if they'd get lucky to pay that low of a rate in their enterprise. So this makes it easy. And then we've built into this an option, so, you know, that's an annual rent dollar amount, it changes annually. That keeps us happy with servicing debt from our general fund to our sewer fund. This is something we can't do with anybody, so if anybody else gets the great idea to come buy city property, there is a clear constitutional prohibition against a city loaning its credit. One exemption, one exception to that rule is for the assistance of the poor and infirm. Helping Hands Food Bank clearly meets that, so I'm comfortable that we can do that in this case. So, the new addition from what was in the packet is Article 11, which is the option. So anytime during the 15-year period, the Helping Hands folks can give us a written notice and execute on that, purchase that five acres for a fixed price of $300,000. And the lease agreement also specifically pre-approves whatever their plan is for a Food Bank, so we're not looking for any future checkbacks. And also pre-approves the sub-tenancy of the Woolley Food Forest Association. So, we tried to capture everything in here to give them the tools necessary to execute their vision without really much more engagement from the city.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. You did get a little bit ahead of me there and you missed one point that I'm really proud of. And that was that the Riggles wanted to be laid to rest when the time came on their own property. And the city is in a very unique position to make that happen. So that was the third win that I wanted to talk about. So for council tonight, we have three things to do to make this work. And they're listed for you right there on page 39. There's three motions. for you right there on page 39, there's three motions. So, I await your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Helping Hands Food Bank.
If you wouldn't mind, just for the record, the lease agreement with purchase option.
With purchase option.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Brendan?
Oh, there's two.
Motion is made by Councilman Sanderman, seconded by Councilman Kinzer, to approve the lease with purchase option for Helping Hands Food Bank. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second motion?
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to Commerce for grant funding to assist Helping Hands Food Bank.
Motion is made by Councilman Owen and seconded by Judith Dunn Lee to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to Department of Commerce for grant funding to assist Helping Hands. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Third one. Who wants it?
Just by way of clarification on item 6, little 3I, the current loan is held in the Cemetery Fund to the sewer fund, so because there's really no cemetery business going on post-lease, we felt it was cleaner to move the debt responsibility to the general fund. So that's what this does, is transfers that $300,000 outstanding debt from the Cemetery Fund to the general fund, and that's the fund that will continue to pay the sewer fund.
Okay, the next resolution is 945-Tax 16.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 945-16, a resolution transferring the interfund loan from the Cemetery to the general fund for the debt related to the portion of the land that is being leased to Helping Hands Food Bank.
Okay, motion is made by Councilman Sandstrom and seconded by Councilman Owen to approve, to adopt, I'm sorry, Resolution 945-Tax 16, a resolution transferring the interfund loan from Cemetery to the general fund for the debt related to the portion of the land that is being leased to Helping Hands. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes, and good work, and, um, thank you all for coming. Did you want to say something, Rick? As part of the presentation?
I'm Rick Judd, and this would have never happened at all had it not been for the foresight and, and the help from the city. This is a, a step that's 37 years way past due. Aaron worked with me every step of the way to make this happen, and I really want to thank the city for its support in that, and, and just thank you.
Which brings us to committee reports and reports from officers, and I should mention that we will be going into executive at the end of the meeting for about 15 minutes under RCW 42.30.110, subparagraph 1 dot I, which concerns litigation. So, you're welcome to stay and listen to the reports, there will be no action afterwards. Thank you all for coming. So, Jason, you're up.
Good evening. So, at the police department, there's, uh, we're just staying busy as normal. One, one thing that we do have happening now is that the Sketch Valley College and the Criminal Justice Training Commission has partnered up and they're starting a Reserve Police Academy this fall at Sketch Valley College, starts in September, and it's going to end in February. So we are currently recruiting volunteers to step up and be reserve officers. Our deadline is this week for the applications, we've got two or three in, we're looking to get two people in that academy. We currently have three active reserves, one of which is pursuing a careerist in Homish County Sheriff's Office, so we're probably going to lose him. So if we can get two more in this year's class, we'll have them available and helping us out next year at the reserve level. And if you recall, the reserves, they've got, it's a volunteer of 16 hours a month. So basically, they come in for two shifts per month. They arrive with their field training officers, and as they go through, we have three different levels. Eventually, with the time, they're up to where they can just come in, grab the reserve car, and go out and be a patrol officer on their shift on their own. It's a huge benefit to the city and the police department because it's free, we don't pay them. We fund them as far as, we sponsor them through the academy, we pay for their equipment and their uniform, they pay a $2,000 fee to the academy, but they also get 14 college credits upon completion. So that kind of helps them out as well. And also, there's very few businesses out there, careers, where you get a chance to volunteer and try it out. I started as a reserve for Cedar Woolley. I was a reserve for six or eight months and realized I want to go full-time. One of our detectives was a reserve, and another one of our officers was a reserve for this department. So it gives the, the city and the police department a chance to kind of look at the individuals coming through, is this going to be a good fit for us, the city, and it's really a good program. So we're excited to see that's, that's kicking up again. Not many, in fact, only three agencies, us and the two tribal police are the only ones that have a reserve program. So we're hoping others will catch on and follow that lead.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions? So, our mayor pro tem has reminded me that I could do this in a better order. I would like to stop there with the committee reports and go to the library debrief, which is item 7. Thank you for the reminder. So, I guess I'll start off with that, just to say I appreciated all of you coming. It was pretty much a success from my perspective, and I don't know if the council has any comments on that.
No, I want to thank everybody for coming. I think it was pretty informative, and I saw a lot of enlightened faces and people, I don't know, I guess, trying to understand either side a little better. And I also want to say that online, you can listen again if you're interested in spending another four hours revisiting everything that happened that evening, but it's online under our library news. So, thanks for the city for posting that right away, so people can, who weren't able to come, can listen, so.
Anybody else? So we have some fresh material up here. Aaron, did you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I put on your desk tonight a memo from SHKS that deals with construction costs. So what our architect, Kevin Keane, has done is essentially taken the Ferndale Library, compared recent library projects with the Ferndale Library, and then escalated that cost forward to a projected fall of 2017 construction, and broken it down by three different size options ranging from 16 to 20,000 square feet, as well as discussing what sort of savings could be achieved by recycling a current building. So, there's really no action for you tonight, it's just a, it's a memo that came out yesterday, and something I thought you should have, it should be on our library page, I would imagine, in the next day or so, and I've got an extra couple of copies too for interested parties.
Aaron, clarification, did you say these show, oh, an existing cost, or an existing building cost, or is this new building?
Yeah, so, for example, if you look at page 2, and you're looking at Cedar Woolley Library, you say the first option there, 16,000 square foot building projected, that would be the cost of building a brand-new building of that size in the fall of 2017.
Okay.
So then if you, you have to actually read through the text of it to understand the deduct from that cost if you recycle a building, depending on the building. So that's a little fuzzier because it would vary depending on the building, and that number also doesn't include the soft costs, contingency, you know, architectural costs, A&E, or the FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment. So, you know, that's, that is the estimated contract cost when you go out to bid the Again, nothing really for the council to do tonight, but it's informative in terms of the conversation that the negotiating committee may ultimately have related to size. You know, we've heard a lot of talk in the community that, you know, Cedar Woolley wants to have a building that's 16 to 20,000 square feet, and the district wants a 10,000 square foot building. I think we were able to effectively address that on Monday, that the 10,000 number is not a proposed partner number, it's a proposed go-it-alone number. And what's interesting is the district contracted with HKP to do a similar exercise based upon their number, and you find their cost per square foot is higher, which of course our architects, you know, indicated was likely to occur. So the next step on this conversation is really, when we do get together again to negotiate, this will be informative for us as we consider costs. And another comment I've got related to the library is, we are in the process right now of scheduling the first, you know, the meeting with our architectural team to kind of kick off the needs assessment and public process for the envisioning project. Not likely to happen before, at least probably late, late August at this point, I would
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, now I will go back. John, you're up.
Thank you. So, the planning department's caught up on all its big plans, thank you again to the city council for approving all of those large documents over the past several months, which has freed up the planning commission to work on some other projects that aren't GMA-specific, Growth Management Act-specific, and, and a little side note, we appear to be Growth Management Act compliant right now, GMA-compliant, which is always a big deal and important to make sure that the city's GMA-compliant, keeps us eligible for state funding on all of our projects that we like to apply for. So it's important for us to be GMA-compliant, and we have achieved that. So the planning commission's now going to be working on planned residential developments, that's, um, projects, kind of like specifics for subdivisions to make, subdivisions more, to include more diverse housing and parks and open space. So they'll be working on that project for the next couple of months, it's something that we've had on the back burner for probably a couple of years, to be honest with you, but that also runs concurrently with an uptick in land use applications such as short plats and project-specific activities, which the planning and building department is able to focus on a lot more now that we're through the GMA process. So we're catching up on the processing of applications for land use permits. There will not be a planning commission meeting in August, they'll be taking the month off in August, well-deserved, and, in the meantime, we'll continue working on project-specific items. That's all I got.
Thank you, John. Counsel, have anything for John? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a report on Jamison, they poured the decorative, or the red concrete on the project is, is complete on the west stage two part, and they're going to be paving the end of this week, that part, in preparation for removing the traffic onto the new lanes on the west side, and then starting the work to finish the project on the east side. With paving, they may well do part of Jamison as well, I'm not sure how much they'll get done, depending on the day they come in, they're talking it's Friday or Saturday. So, that project's moving along pretty well, they're actually projecting they'll finish early to mid-September, which would be about a month and a half early, which is a good thing. And, so that's moving ahead pretty well. The other thing on the docket right now is we have requested federal funds authorization for the SR20 Cascade Trail Project, just waiting to hear back from them. We're prepared to go to add as soon as we have their authorization, and, so we hope that's going to come up pretty quick. And we're actually running out of season to get that one built, if we don't get their notification in the next week or so, we'll have to look at, you know, possibly delaying that until 2017. I'm working pretty hard on getting the TIB application together for the Fruitdale Project. County and the port and the city have been working together to put together a joint letter supporting the project, that'll be circulating for signatures in a couple of weeks, preparatory for submitting that on the 19th of, of August. We'll know in November, and if it is funded, we'll be prepared to construct that in 2017. I have the 90% plan sets on my desk that I'm reviewing right now, I'll have the 100% next week, and, and we'll get that ready. The engineer's estimate is slightly under what I had previously estimated for the project, so it's tracking pretty well that way. It's about a million seven construction project, that. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll look forward to the completion of that, hopefully either before school starts or shortly thereafter, so.
Yeah, I'm certain.
Fingers crossed.
I'm certain that we'll have Jamison and Beatty back open before school starts, that's, that's given. The curbs and sidewalks, well, the sidewalks are under construction, curbs are done, roads ready for asphalt, so really, that's a pretty simple part of the project, should be done in the next two or three weeks, really. And we'll open that back up.
And I think I completed the circle with the school on Mr. Ramsey's plan, so.
That's good.
I think we're good.
Can I ask, just a quick question?
Sure.
With the Memorial Park project, I guess, we're in, I guess, I don't know, when's the date for that to be finalized from the RCO?
Well, Nathan and I will be in Olympia on August 9th presenting that program to RCO.
I've been reminding myself for weeks, I just remembered tonight, but there's two trees by the memorial, and they're really the only shade in that park. Is there a way to salvage those trees in the, in the redevelopment plan?
No.
Please.
You can plant a tree after the fact.
Well, no, they're so, I mean, they're the, the actual only shade in that whole park.
That, that needs heart nut, and maybe some lagoons, and some nitrogen fixers, and some Siberian berries.
I don't care about that, I want shade. I don't, I'm not going to be bashing around, I want to be able to sit down and enjoy.
So, we'll have to take a look at the plan, but those, those two trees in particular are not salvageable in their current location for a number of reasons. One is we have a plan for something there, and two, the operation of a spray park, it's, it's really not ideal to have a bunch of leaf-dropping trees right in the vicinity due to the, the slip-and-slide nature of slimy leaves. So, you know, it's kind of a best practice to have that a bit more open in that area, but certainly on a hot sunny day, it's nice to have a place where you can get some respite from the sunshine, so.
You're up, Aaron. Did anybody else?
Any question for Mark?
All right, so a couple items.
Hold on, Aaron.
Oh, yeah.
Sander has a question.
Mark, I have a question. The new roundabout appears to me to be on a slope, am I seeing that wrong? Or is it really on a, what's the purpose for that?
Well, those are tricky to get the drainage to work on, and that, it's exaggerated right now because the paving's not in, it's not going to appear to be quite as steep. It's, it's very similar, really, to the one at Cook &amp; Ferry in terms of the tip on that.
I guess I hadn't noticed it as much yet.
Probably don't notice it that much. When you're driving in it, you do feel it, and that's sort of on purpose as well, that's part of slowing the traffic down. So, it's really prominent right now because it's standing up and it's dug out all around it.
Yeah, the center part, look.
But it definitely has a tilt to the, to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
All right, so a couple items from me. Rob McCready's last day with the city is tomorrow, after 11 and a half years of service. He was our senior poo crew operator, so he had one of the more glamorous jobs in the city of suctioning, vacuuming, jetting, slurping, however you want to describe it, our sewer lines, TVing, mapping them. He was the guy who responded along with Kerry for most of that 11 years. The two of them, the poo crew, one and two, would hit the, hit the road with their lights blazing when things weren't flowing, and they go right into the trench, and it's everything you can you can imagine it would be, and much worse. So if you have time tomorrow from 12:00 to 2:00, Rob's having a little barbecue at the park, and it'd be great to stop by. Wish him well. He's not going to be coming to the council to have a farewell plaque bestowed upon him.
I'm going to him, he won't get away with that one.
Yeah, well, you've got one in your office, so ready to roll. Rob's replacement is Brent Schiefelbein, who transferred from our solid waste division after, you know, just shy of a year of service. He's gone over to take that job, and today the city offered Glenn Gardner, Brent's old job in the solid waste department. So Glenn will be starting with the city on August 15th. Look for him out on, on the recycling routes during the day, and if you happen to dial 911, he'll continue to help you in the evenings in our fire department as a volunteer. Other items pending, a lot going on in my schedule regarding EMS. Our delivery models advisory group is, is really cranking along. We had a subcommittee meeting this week, looking at now five potential models to review in more detail to bring back to the full group. And what we're talking about specifically are five models of governance for the EMS system countywide, as well as different delivery models within those governance models. So we're looking at a status quo, fire-based consortium model, or regional fire authority. We're looking at an EMS district, we're looking at a county department, and we're also looking at what we've called a public safety model, which is really moving EMS under the, the emergency management council. So a lot of work, I, I think what's interesting to me is, you know, this EMS issue has been really contentious. I remember when I was on the EMS commission in maybe 2001 or '02, some of the same issues were equally as contentious then as they have been in recent years. This group, with the facilitator that the county's hired, with the engagement of the commissioners, they've got good stakeholders around the table, and it feels like we're, we're peeling back some of those years and years, that history of acrimony and, and really getting to the base problem. And I guess I want to compliment the group, when they come to the room, they're focused not on their jurisdictions or their little territories, but on the county itself. And that's the key to this model, is that Skagit County is one of the only counties of the 39 in our state with a countywide EMS levy. And that's also the source of a lot of the acrimony, because those dollars have to be divided up somehow. So that's really, when you, when you get down to the governance, the question is who gets to decide where the money goes? And then how best do you serve the patients? So a lot of action there, and council member Dun Lee and I are on the full group and continuing to work through that. Also on the EMS front, working through my role at Central Valley Ambulance Authority, and also serving the fire department with our BLS integration. I think we're on the cusp of kicking up our current pilot program. We're about a year into a BLS integration process, where Seadruly Fire became the first BLS provider that the county used EMS levy money to support. So we're, we're over a year now.
Can you spell out your acronyms for those who may not know what you're talking about?
Thank you.
I know, I know the council knows, but.
All right, well, I got what EMS, that's Emergency Medical Service, and BLS is your basic life support. So for those of you, it's kind of funny, the director of the EMS department came into my office this morning with a cast on his arm. I don't know what happened. Ah, it was just a BLS call. Nobody else would think of it that way. But BLS, Basic Life Support, ALS, Advanced Life Support. So Seadruly Fire has two licensed BLS transport vehicles. We bill insurance companies as well as the government for our services. Central Valley Ambulance Authority has four licensed ALS transport vehicles. City of Anacortes does ALS and BLS. Aeroskagit does both in the far east county. So what's unique, though, is for the past year, Seadruly Fire has been doing two things to help the EMS system. One, we're transporting BLS patients when there aren't other units available, both within our service territory, which is huge, because remember, our fire department is not provincial. We don't stop at the borders, we run to the Watkin County border on the north, we run east all the way past Hamilton, and then we're west out to District Line Road, and south to the river. So one of the, probably the largest municipal response area, because we serve all of Fire District Eight as well. And our fire department will go actually anywhere in the county that's requested when the system needs us, which is something that's almost unheard of. So we've been out to Lake Kavina, we've been out on Samish Island, you know, we're, we'll go where the patient needs us to help the system. So for the past year, we've been doing that in a surge model. When needed, we'll step up and help. Either we'll take our rig out and take a patient, or we'll split. So we'll take, one of our EMTs, Emergency Medical Technicians, and we'll swap out with a paramedic, and take one ALS rig and turn it into two ALS rigs. Now, I think we're on the cusp of having, having an agreement with, between the Central Valley Ambulance Authority and its, its own union, that will allow them to engage with the Seadruly Fire Department on a more intensive experiment. That is, from now until the end of the year, Seadruly Fire would take 100% of the BLS patients. That's a huge difference. We're running three to four transports a week right now. That should kick it up to three to four transports per day. So remember, our fire department runs about 2,200 calls a year, 85% of them are EMS, and the majority of those are BLS. And what we're trying to study is, how do you put the right unit at the right patient at the right time? How do we ensure that the ALS units are available for ALS calls? So if you're having a cardiac issue, we want those paramedics at your side, not helping somebody who doesn't need them, somebody that our EMTs are perfectly capable, trained and licensed to serve. So a lot of work there. Also from the fire front, 5511's in service now, so you'll see a rather beautiful truck serving the community with not much fanfare. 5529 is our frontline ambulance at station two, and it is not doing well. It's, it's a bit of a sick rig. So just, just get prepared for a budget request. We need to replace that, especially if we intensify our transports. 5519 is brand-new as of this year. 29's on ERNR for replacement next year. My guess is what we're going to do is come to you with a proposal to order that vehicle in '16 for '17 delivery, and probably slow down our acquisition of other 2017 ERNR equipment to ensure that we have cash flow adequate to make these purchases happen. On another front, I'm working closely with the, I mentioned the public safety model. The concept there is the, the Emergency Management Council, which is an interlocal group of the four cities, four towns in the county, was created 2000, in 1998, amended in 2004 to run Skagit 911. At that time, it also oversaw the Department of Emergency Management, which was originally created in 1981. We are working right now with our partners to revise the governance structure for Skagit 911, possibly address DEM at the same time, and depending upon the, the delivery models advisory group, as well as all of the constituent members, the cities and the towns in the county, you know, there could be room then for EMS to run under that. But even if that doesn't happen, we are, I think, the EMC, Emergency Management Council, has committed to a new rate structure in 2017 that will better support dispatch. It will cost us more money, incidentally, but in order to execute that, we have to revise the interlocal agreement that creates the EMC that runs the dispatch center. So I'm giving you that explanation because it's going to be coming, it's also something that could be in the press. It's, it's maybe not as wonky as it sounds. Kind of interesting. Joe Project's still plodding along. I do have a $1 bet with Chief Klinger, and I expect to win it, in terms of the opening date. And lastly, the Swift Center, I, I think the name has stock. We're now looking at logos and talking signage, and you can expect on your August 10th agenda a third amended interlocal between the partners for that. That would be the port, the county, and the city. We're interested in addressing the permitting costs, the shared, the shared cost of permitting the, the fishing pond, as well as some ongoing costs related to relocating the mental health facilities, behavioral health facilities from the campus. So working closely with our partners to see that that project continues to advance to, to our desired vision.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Pat's A.
Finance staff are continuing to become more proficient in the use of our new online software, and we're learning more about the different reports and finding it works really well. We are experiencing the time savings that we hope to find, which is much needed. Finance staff have also been involved in interviewing, as well as all of the paperwork and the personnel shuffles that we've been experiencing lately. And we're starting to work on the budget calendar and other budget items for 2017.
So in terms of the online bill pay, do we have a feel for how many people have taken advantage of that or changed how they?
Oh.
If you don't have the answer, that's fine.
It feels like hundreds. I mean, it's become really successful. So many people will call in to make a payment or, and hang up because they're going to go online and do it themselves, and set it up as auto-pay.
All right, thank you. Cheers.
Nothing.
Brenda?
Nothing.
Chuck?
And I have something for Aaron. If you could, next Tuesday morning about 8:30, could you meet me down at the senior center?
Do you mind breakfast?
No. I've, I've had so many complaints from those old ladies that they have to open the, the doors and windows, you know, because we don't have air conditioning, you know that, right?
I'm shocked to hear that, councilman Owen.
But that weed.
8:30, you talk to August 2nd?
That weed patch, they're allergic to all that stuff, and, and those old people have allergies, and they're really complaining about it, so.
That accounts for.
I'm, I'm going to tell you this one time, and then I'm done with it. I'll let you take care of it, because.
You're going to put the heat on me?
Yeah, I'm putting the heat on you.
Chuck, are you talking about the flowers that are in the.
If you call them flowers.
Well, they, they look like flowers, but I'm just wondering what.
They grow it all over the, the walkway and the main walkway, the rose bushes is grown out over that. It's just, it's terrible, but.
So, so did you say August 2nd at 8:30 a.m.?
Yeah, that's, that would be next Tuesday.
I'll be there. And, and just so you know, I've already asked Nathan to freshen up his bids, his estimates for air conditioning, so we'll have those number available for the council to consider as part of the 2017 budget process.
Right now, the emergency's not air conditioning, it's getting those old ladies off my back.
Oh, my.
I'll let you handle that anyway.
Anything else, Chuck?
No, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Brett?
Just a couple of things. I wondered if we came up with a solution yet for the bikes at the skate park? I, I know you mentioned it the other day, but I just wanted to know if you modified that.
Sergeant Harris and I went out and had a summit, no pie involved, but we did have a Q and A session with the folks at the skate park.
Yesterday?
I think it was yesterday, and we, we ran into a very, I thought, very responsible mid-20s?
23.
23-year-old skateboarder-habited bike rider as well. And it's a really, a really good conversation about a number of issues there, the, the smoking, the bench, the, the bikes. Scooters apparently are an issue for some of the skaters.
They're flipping off the mayor and telling him to go to Hallow Park?
He was arrested yesterday, that fellow.
Really?
He, he came back. So in, in any case, what I suggested to him is a couple of things. One, you know, the city council was following the designer builder, grind line's recommendations in establishing the usage rules, and that they were based both upon the maintenance of the park, as well as the safety of the skaters. So, you know, pegs, chipped concrete, chipped concrete allows the skateboard wheels to stop and throw a rider off, also mixing the different speeds and weights of skates and bikes. Now, he had an answer for all of those issues, incidentally, so I, I suggested to him, hey, call Jamie Jacobs. We respect him, we trust him. If Jamie shows up and tells the city council that bikes with no pegs and rubber handles, it would be great. I suspect the council will be receptive. More importantly, though, I suggested that if the bikes really want to have a place to bike, then they should do what the skateboard folks did, and that is come together, find a common vision, and, and kind of kick off a process not unlike what the Woolley Food Forest Association is doing. We have places where we could accommodate them in our public lands, and it would be totally within the mission of our Parks Department to do so. At this point, that's not the place, so what we're, what we've done is, we are evaluating our signage, we're evaluating our seating, and we're absolutely ramping up our enforcement. So you can expect to see more bikes taken and more people excluded from the park and or arrested for trespassing. It's not a path we want to go down, it's not fun. None of our police officers like to do it, and our sergeant-in-chief also don't love doing it. But the problem is, it's not working, having folks clearly violating the rules that are legibly signed, and when they're called upon it, their response is to tell somebody to simply F off. So we've got to solve it, and I think it's going to be a combination of enforcement, you know, creative opportunities to make it better, and engagement about what it is we're really trying to do out there.
Thanks. Second, Mary talked about that tonight, but signage has been a focus of mine since being elected, seeing the old photo of the sign over the trestle, and I, I think it is important, I mean, we, at least we got the roundabout to, to face into Ferry, but signage on that highway I've been talking about for a long time, I think it's something we really should focus on, maybe through our business development committee or something. But even, I mean, there's no sign if you're coming south on, or heading west on Highway 20, if you've come off of Highway 9, you're going through, you don't even know that you're in Seadruly on that, on that road.
Yeah, it's a point well-taken, and I wish Cooksno was still here so that I could share with her what Brett alluded to. The original design of that roundabout actually did not bring traffic downtown with Mark's help, and we were able to get the state to allow us to continue that, so that there was a way in. It was not in the state's original design. It could have been a lot worse. Okay, anything else, Brett?
Last I want to say is, back to the library topic, I suppose regardless of partnership or not, or if there's two libraries or one, I, I think I'm interested in, to see if we have anything in our budget to provide for our board anyway, and, and offer an invitation to the other board, is some sort of get-to-know-your-neighbor lunch, some sort of team-building exercise, because if they are going to be our neighbors, if they're going to be here as two libraries or one, at least for the interim period, I'm interested in seeing if they would want to get together and, you know, kind of humanize each other instead of dwelling on the negative past.
Interestingly, our library board of directors met, and that was something they talked about at the end, so. Okay, anything else, Brett? So now it is, I can't see, 8:49, and we will go into executive session for about 15 minutes under the RCW 42.30.110, sub-paragraph 1.0. There's no action. Thank you all for coming. So it is now 9:10, and we are back from executive. I'll entertain a motion.
I approve that we adjourn.
Second.
We've been seconded to adjourn, and everybody have a great evening. Thanks.